And I would like to ask the board to please introduce themselves. Why don't you start, Bruce?
Hi, everybody. My name is Bruce Lee Clark. Welcome to the meeting.
Good evening. I'm Jeanne Connor.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Jenkins and I'm dodging the sun.
Good evening. This is Jim Carroll.
Hi, everyone. Sarah Harron.
Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have town manager Stuart Hurd. We're lucky to have Nancy Lively take minutes as she always does. Megan Harrington has joined us from the Health Department, Shannon Barsati, town staff, and we have the Fearless CAT TV with us here. Before we start the meeting, let me read the following, please, which is that due to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott pursuant to addendum six, Executive Order 1-20 Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There's no physical location to attend the meeting. However, the public may view it on CAT TV and call in at 1-646-558-8656 using the meeting ID 819-9745-4575. If technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined, while votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll call vote in accordance with the law. So we are on the Zoom webinar platform now. We have found that it's easier for people to access and stay with the meeting for those that want to participate. If you do want to participate in the meeting, if you want to be recognized in the meeting, you can either do number three, which is to join the Zoom meeting through the link, which has been provided by the town in the in the meeting agenda. Or if you're hooking up by phone, you can dial again 646-558-8656, entering the meeting ID 819-9745-4575. But as always, probably the two best ways to view it are to either watch it on CAT TV channel 1085 or view it on CAT TV Facebook Live, as we have said before. If you do join us by computer at the appropriate time, you can use the raise hand function to be recognized by, it says moderator, by in this case, the chair. If you're calling by telephone, you have to press star nine to essentially raise your hand. And when you're called on by the chair, you'll be prompted to unmute yourself. If you're on the telephone, that's pressing star six and the telephone would tell you to do that. We ask you to please clearly state your full name and residence and then tell us what's on your mind. So that's how to hook up to the meeting tonight. And the first order of business, as always, is our consent agenda. So I'm not sure if everybody saw the liquor license that was circulated. Board give me a nod if you did. Okay. So the liquor license was circulated a little bit later, but we have the minutes of March 8, 2021. The warrants circulated and quite a hefty list of liquor licenses that are that are on the on the list tonight. I know that most of you make a point of talking to Stuart about the warrants ahead of time, but if you've not had a chance to get your questions answered, now is the time for that. If there are any lingering things for Nancy on the minutes, now would be a good time as well. For the purposes of discussion, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I'll move.
Thank you, Bruce. Do I have a second? Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so any questions or comments on the minutes of March 8 or the warrants or the liquor licenses? Jeanne, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Is Aramark the, what is Aramark? The dining hall and outside consumption? Does anybody know? I was just curious.
Stuart is going to have to tell us that because Aramark Dining Hall and Outside Consumption, Stuart. Do you have any?
Frankly, I don't. I don't know.
Okay.
It may refer to the college, but I don't know that.
Right. I have a feeling it's it's like that. It's a it's a food cafeteria.
I don't see these licenses. I just see the list as prepared.
Okay.
And it is.
It's not going to make me vote no. I just was curious.
Yeah, it's a renewal. So you've done it before.
There's a renewal, yeah. So there are 15. There are 15 licenses that are either up for class one, class two, or class three renewals, and that's what we'd be voting on tonight. Any other questions? If not, I would ask you please to all unmute yourself. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. Thank you very much. Now, we are going to move into a period of public comment. And after that, we have Megan Harrington joining us. We have a couple of people who have attended, who are attendees in this meeting, and we thank you for watching. I don't see any hands up from the attendees at this point. And so I I do not see anyone calling in for public comment. So I think what I'd like to do with the board's permission is to do what I did last week, which is to move to item three, the COVID update, allow Megan Harrington to give her update. If any of the attendees or other people call in in the next five or 10 minutes, if we could take their comments after the COVID update, that would be great. Is that okay with the board? Okay, great. Megan, thank you very much for being with us. I don't know. It seems like as soon as we started having you on the meetings, everything started getting better. So I'm thinking maybe that's somehow related to you.
I'm so good at my job. That's just, you know, that's that's very evident. No, no, it's a lot of hard work by a lot of people across the state, across the country. So, but thank you. It's good to be here. I'm Megan Harrington. I'm the district director with the Bennington District Office with the Vermont Department of Health. Thank you so much for having me on the past few weeks. It's been a real pleasure to be able to join you every two weeks with the updates. I think the biggest news we heard last week from the governor's press announcement was the opening of the next eligibility band as well as the timeline for the age groups. So folks haven't heard, starting this Thursday, 60 plus will be eligible to make an appointment. Following Thursday, every Monday, we'll see another age band. 50 plus, March 29th, 40 plus, April 5th, 30 plus, April 12th, 16 plus, April 19th. So after the 19th, anyone 16 plus in Vermont can get a vaccine for COVID. Same registration process as these age bands open up. You can call to make an appointment at the 855-722-7878 number, or you can go to healthvermont.gov/myvaccine to create an account and get an appointment. As I've shared previously, you can go on, create your appointment, or I'm sorry, create your account ahead of time. So that way, when your age band opens, you can jump right in and schedule your appointment. For folks who prefer talking to a human, you can call the 855 number. That phone line is very busy at 8:15 when the age bands open up. But as I've also shared, there is an appointment for you. So if you don't get through right away or you wait until the next day or the day after, please do not fret. There is an appointment. There is a vaccine for you. So we're really excited about that with the way things are going when with the vaccine uptake. We're seeing great numbers. We heard 85% of 75 plus in Vermont have received one dose. And if you look at the case numbers for our 80 plus Vermonters, they have plummeted. You know, they were the second highest after 20 to 29 as far as case rates. Now they're well below almost all the other age groups. So a real testament to the power of the vaccine and and people choosing to get it. So really exciting news. We're seeing similar with 65 plus. I guess this is a national, but 65% of 65 plus have sought their vaccine as well nationwide. So we're seeing good vaccine uptake. We've heard, you know, that there is some hesitancy as we get into the age bands, but we're hoping good public messaging, good support to our family members and neighbors who are concerned or have questions that people are coming at it from a positive approach. A couples events that are coming up in addition to the regular clinics, you know, through SVHCs, through our pharmacies, through our retailers. This Wednesday, there will be a vaccination program for Veterans Vaccine Clinic at Riley Rink in Manchester. So this is for all veterans. There is a number to call. I tried to call this evening to get more information because it's pretty limited in the article I found, but their call center is only open from 8 to 4 p.m. So noted to make an appointment. The number to reach them is 802-296-5151. The clinic is being run by the White River Junction VA. So I hope folks can get through and find out more information. I have a very limited amount. The vaccine, they will have J. Johnson &amp; Johnson. So it will be a one-dose-and-done appointment. As we have discussed previously, the rates in Bennington County continue to decline. The towns have gone down significantly, so much so that I did not get the serious email from our Epi team with our cases. So I guess no news is is good news. So that was, I was glad to report that. For our local office, we will wrap up our last second-dose clinic at Burn Burton in Manchester this Friday. SVHC will continue to host clinics as our retail partners. They are doing a huge lift. You know, in addition to the age bands, they've also spent the last three Saturdays vaccinating educators. So they are busy, busy, busy. Our local Health Department team will be moving on to smaller targeted clinics, working with specific community partners and also maybe being a little bit more mobile, doing more of a place-based approach for folks. You know, as we hear about, it's great news that 85% of our 75-plus-year-olds have been vaccinated, but we'd love to find out where the other 15 are and and go to them if need be. So we'll be working on that over the next few months as vaccine allocation allows. So, sorry, Jim, I see your hand up. Did you have a question?
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. Couple of questions for you. With respect, I, you know, about a week or 10 days ago, the governor rolled back or capitulated, I think it's probably a more appropriate word, to get teachers vaccinated around the state. And I just wonder, can you tell us how that's going?
So, Jimmy, you broke.
Jimmy, you sound like a robot. I'm afraid you sound like a robot, Jim. If you could get a little closer to your Wi-Fi sender, that'd be great.
Okay.
If I caught it, did you ask how the vax, the educator vaccination rollout's been going?
How's this? Is this better?
That is better, yes. It's been it's been going well. The last numbers I saw from SVHC over this last Saturday was 620 educators sought out the vaccine and the previous two clinics, I believe, had filled up as well. And we did hear about some low numbers in some of our other districts. Folks may have heard about a St. Albans clinic for educators that hadn't filled. I believe the reasoning behind that was because they announced it fairly late. And so it appeared like there wasn't a lot of participation, but I think people were filling up the appointment slots. But we are seeing a really great turnout of our educators and healthcare provider, health and childcare providers, excuse me.
That's great because it, you know, it's it's been such a drag on the economy. You know, parents having to stay home with their kids and, you know, you know. But the the other question that I have for you is, you know, I really would prefer to have just a one-and-done shot. And so what's the likelihood of the J&amp;J shots being available to the people in the state of Vermont?
That's a really good question, and I unfortunately, you know, we find out almost on a week-by-week basis. Our office is prepared basically for Moderna for the long term. J&amp;J, you know, for educators, when we think about wanting to get kiddos back into school, J&amp;J, one-and-done, you're not waiting for the second dose and then the two weeks. So it's it's hard to say what our allocation will look like, but, you know, the saying goes, the the best vaccine for you is the one that you're offered. So that's what we would love to encourage for folks. It is something that that one-dose-and-done, but what we've been using is, you know, once you make your appointment, give yourself about two months to be fully vaccinated. And that's that's the realistic timeline.
Okay, I don't want to wait that long, but, you know, who am I?
But I think it's very promising. You know, we're on vaccine day 90-something. So little over three months and over almost 20% of the state is vaccinated. So I think we look at what we've done in three months and thinking about another six and then nine months and we'll be in a very, very good place.
That's great. And thank you for all the work that you've done.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Good questions, Jim. Jeanne Connor, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi, Megan. When you were, when you were mentioning that people are hesitant, something that I keep hearing, and I don't, I hope you can speak to it just briefly, is people are afraid of the vaccine partially because it was developed so quickly and we're just not used to it. And I've explained what I know that, you know, the reasons that it was, that it could happen as as quickly as it did. But can you speak to that just briefly?
Sure, sure. So I think, you know, two, two responses to that. The mRNA technology and those developments are 10 years in the making. So the the delivery of the vaccine, the that special mechanism, how it speaks with ourselves and gets us to create antibodies is 10 years in the making. So that technology itself is well researched. It's been, you know, utilized for other for other things. And so they were able to make it fit for this vaccine very quickly. So that that's one reason. So the technology itself is is old, is good, well-tested. Second is that with COVID, basically, everything else stopped. So these pharmaceutical companies who are working on other developments, other R&amp;D, paused everything to work on COVID, and I think that's why we saw it happen so, so quickly. So I think, yeah, it it looked funny at first, but then, you know, when we really dive in and see that it's a well-researched and, you know, well, through the scientific community, you know, well-researched vaccine, that that it isn't that fast, actually.
Well, I guess, I guess, yeah, and it seems like while it happened much more quickly, all the steps happened the way they always do. It was just compressed.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It went through the same clinical trials. It went through, you know, the Advisory Committee. It was, it's still being trialed, really. They're still looking at all that information. I think I've shared before, you know, there's the the V, the V cares, which allows people to report in real time about adverse effects. And so they're constantly collecting that that information. And as of now, you know, there has, it's been safe. They haven't had any serious issues. So but yes, and the emergency authorized use too, which looks a little bit different than just a regular FDA approval, but that's what it's for. So it can get out to the market and people quickly.
All right.
Hi, Jeannie.
Great. Go ahead, Jeannie.
Hi, Megan. So I have the wedding question. For people that are vaccinated. So I've been invited to a wedding in Virginia, and we will be vaccinated. And it's a natural wedding, but they just let us know that they're expecting 75 to 100 people, which just sort of terrified us. So I'm wondering what the guidance is on large gatherings for people that are vaccinated.
I think I haven't heard the guidance yet for large gatherings yet. Still, still waiting to hear that. As far as travel for vaccinated folks, you, you know, we're able to able to travel now and do not have to quarantine when we get back. As far as a gathering in Virginia with 75 people that may be not vaccinated, I would ask their health department to maybe look at their their guidance that would allow that or if they're going rogue. So, right, we're not, we haven't issued anything yet. It might be a little too soon to talk about weddings and things, but how fun. I love weddings. Can't wait to go to one again.
Me too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Megan as we move along here now? Megan, thank you very much. I I hate, I I won't be at the next meeting. I'll be watching the next meeting, but our, this board, I expect, would like to probably hear from you at least one more time because we might jinx it if we didn't have you come back.
You don't want to see that.
Rapidly worse. So if you'd be willing to come back again and keep us posted, I think a little bit longer, that would be very helpful, at least while we get through this this next phase of vaccinations. Is that all right?
Absolutely. See you in two weeks.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do. Okay, good night. There is nobody in the waiting room, no attendees that are raising their hand that would like to participate in the public comment. So at this point, I'm going to close public comment and move on to the fourth item of our agenda, which is the YMCA update. And we are very fortunate to have Kayla Becker back with us tonight and Shannon Barsati from Powell. So probably Shannon's, you know, focus will go in and out a little bit with the with the broadband. But Kayla, it's great to have you here, and we're looking forward to your your YMCA update.
Thanks for having me again. All right, so tonight, actually, I think started because we had the exciting news that we finally did something in the Ben High space. So I mentioned it to Shannon. I said, oh, we're going to do our big children's book giveaway. We had a grant. You know, we're going to do it at Ben High. And like, oh, great, we should announce that. And then as I started looking, like, you probably want to know about all the other programs we're doing too. So I'm going to do a quick run-through and then answer any questions. So we did have our first event in Ben High using the auditorium where the farmer's market is. It was great. It let people come in, be spaced out. We saw over 40 children, got brand-new books. It was lovely. All right. And then back to like our regular programming that we're, you know, kind of busting at the seams, but looking forward to getting both outside and into the Ben High space. We've been continuing swim lessons. I had Taylor Haynes run some numbers for me just to go along with this, if you don't mind me reading. We do about 48 different family groups per week are served in the swim lessons. We're offering five days a week of water exercise with slightly different names, so more of like an upbeat with Jane DeSanto. And then a lower-impact, more senior-focused, but not just seniors. All programs are open to anyone in the community that's right now a member. Let's see, we are doing our youth program is continuing while Wednesdays remain asynchronous. So that's been taking place at the Senior Center. And then we walk the kids after lunchtime to the rec center. They play outside and then swim. And we are maxed out at that around 12 to 15 kids per Wednesday. And then when they're in-service days, we also open it up. So families who are working have care. Let's see. We also have group exercise, which, again, we're using this Senior Center space, which is limited in size with the spacing. So we have a higher-impact class. It's limited to five people. And then we have yoga with Jane. And again, this is open to anyone. We are seeing mostly elderly adults, but I love yoga myself, so I took the class a couple of times. Coming up, we just opened registration for soccer. Spring soccer for ages four to 14 will be at Willow Park. Sports and Play, which is kind of to go along with the great Bennington Little League program and Town and Little League. That's for younger kids, siblings. They can try out a different sport each week. That's on Tuesday and Thursday night. And then we received a Building Bright Futures grant, which purchased some like tumble equipment. So the toddlers can come and use the Ben High space to do some like low-impact playgroup, again, being very distanced and wearing masks, but getting out of the house. And just keep going, you guys. Hopefully, we'll ask me questions after.
Quite a list.
It is quite a list. And this is why I was like, well, yes, we had a great community book giveaway, but we've been just staying really busy with programming and it's exciting. We received a Stuart's grant to support our Teen Leaders Program, which I think I mentioned at one of the last meetings. And they are starting out by working with our school-age kids. So the teens are kind of buddying up and finding like a younger kiddo to talk with at the youth program, and that went really well. Community Garden. So you'll be hearing more about that soon, but just trying to support the Community Garden, give it some more structure. Let's see. We did a February break camp for the kids. We'll be doing it in April break. Again, the February break camp was at the Senior Center and was very limited. We weren't full. We had to turn people away. So we're hoping to use the Ben High space for the April break camp and be able to double that number potentially. And then I guess the last thing is Taylor and I are both lifeguard instructor certified. So that's exciting because we wanted to bring some community training classes. So.
That's great. Are you using all the spaces in the in the old middle school in the old Ben High building at this point, when you talk about the April break?
So, you know, I'm hopeful. We're using the auditorium, which is where the farmer's market has been. Those other two large rooms that I've shown in the pictures are so close to being done. They have the carpet in, the flooring, finishing up painting. So we're very close to starting there, but not quite yet.
That's great. Before we move on to board questions, so Kayla, thank you very much. It's it's, we are so pleased to have so much happening for the youth of Bennington and to see these programs expanding. It's exactly what I think we all hoped would happen as we brought a sort of higher level of professionalism to our recreation department. So thank you for that. Shannon, are you, I'd love to invite you just before we take questions. I see Jim has his hand up, but before we go there, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this about the any, any part of this or the use of the Ben High space or any updates that you feel like we need to hear?
Well, I mean, Kayla went through most of them, but mostly just that we're wrapping up, you know, all of the community development grants that we received, one for Ben High, also for Sunrise, and third for UCS for the expansion. Those are all, those grant agreements are all going to be signed soon, and the fundies, funding is going to come through. And so that's really exciting to be able to to kind of make all these things happen. And then it's pretty amazing that, you know, I was just talking to the State Office for Community Development today and how each of them are really on time. You know, the Ben High project is about to be opened out for the auditorium side. The UCS addition is almost complete. And then the Sunrise, what they did is they updated their air filtration system in all of their buildings, and they've done some expansion as well. So so there's a lot of good news happening. And just a little anecdote that I want to share that I thought was pretty great. Today, I talked to a teacher from BBA in Manchester. And his students' class, I can't remember the exact name, but it's sort of like an urban planning class. And so his students are going to meet me on Wednesday, and we're going to take a tour of all over downtown Bennington because the Manchester kids want to come see all the things that are happening in Bennington. So we're going to start at the rec center, walk through the Energizer campus and talk about the reuse planning that's going to be starting this week. And then we're going to stop by Ben High and go to the Putnam Block. So if you have anything else that we should check out, let me know.
Great. That's great. Thank you for for adding that on. So board, questions for Kayla about the YMCA update. Jim, I see your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First to both Kayla and Shannon, thank you for all the work that you've done. It's been remarkable. And and not only for my education, but for the the general public. When you 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 go to apply for grants, are they strictly limited to federal and state grant funding, or do you go to people like the Gollub Corporation that owns Price Chopper or Home Depot or or Walmart for, you know, grants that may be available?
I will say that I go for any and all grants and grants both monetarily and in product. You know, as far, I reached out to Home Depot when I learned that I'd be getting in a role involved in the Community Garden. And he was quick to offer like, hey, we'll have donations of vegetables and flowers. But, you know, so things, both monetarily, I look all different sources. People want to support good things, organizations, so.
I'll just second that. So Kayla and I are constantly on the lookout and and then people are sending us great ideas as well. We're always talking to each other about what's the next move.
Hit up the car dealerships, too. This is a suggestion.
Then if you have any connections, let us know.
Well, if if there's. Well, if there's anything that I can do, you just let me know, you know, to get ahold of me. But thank you again for all the good work that you've done, both of you.
That's great. Thanks, Jim. Go ahead, Bruce.
Muted.
You're still muted, Bruce.
My connection with the, with the rec center is twofold. One, I'm looking forward to the, do you have a timeline for moving the exercise equipment? That's one, so that, so that more of us can use it. I'm waiting sort of to be fully vaccinated, but just because it's so close in the other, in the original space. And, and secondly, I just wanted to thank your staff for the way you answer the phones. My wife signs up for a lane for swimming weekly for a couple of days. And, you know, Taylor is always good-natured, even if not everybody leaving messages on the phone are equally good-natured. And I wanted to take this opportunity to tell the community, they're doing the best they can. There's only so many lanes. You can't be, you know, that's just the way life is. So I just wanted to thank Taylor, Taylor for her good nature on that. But I'd love some heads up on the exercise equipment.
Yeah. Thank you for that. That's important too. You know, we do still have a full rec center to operate in addition to the programming. So the phones, Taylor and I are the two who answer the phones Friday mornings. We usually rotate. It's very taxing. As you know, the phone rings nonstop. We do try our best, but we were finding that, you know, if you didn't call right at six and not stop calling, you weren't getting a time. So last week, we implemented a three-hour limit per week or five half-hour spots on Friday morning. You could call back later to, you know, if there is anything left to fill in then. It was well-received and we thank everyone for their understanding. Just trying to get more people in to use the pool. So thank you for acknowledging that. You know, we always treat ourselves to a treat on Friday morning after. But the staff are great and, you know, we're doing that.
Well deserved.
Thank you. For the gym equipment, you know, that as far as I know, we're still working with Chris and Shannon on getting the other half, if you will, the auditorium and then the gym half ready. I haven't heard any update beyond July being the plan, but one change that we made for those who were curious, we still have a six-person at-a-time limit in the fitness center. We did put up, or the town, they're great, by the way. Like, I just feel like I have to take any opportunity to thank the town buildings and grounds. They're wonderful. They put up these like screen curtains as a barrier between the treadmills. So at least we could have a barrier if we wanted two people on a treadmill at the same time. So that's the only update I have as far as moving over, but.
Okay. Thanks.
Jean Connor, go ahead, please.
Hi Kayla. I'm curious. Well, first of all, I also want to say that the two of you, Taylor and you, and maybe others, but especially you, you're like the dynamic duo. It's like you have this can-do attitude and it's just quite amazing. I think partially it's your age, but I think it's more than that. I think it's just nothing stops you. Nothing, you don't let anything get in your way. So I just, I've noticed that over the time that I've gotten to know you and it's, it's, it's a wonderful skill. I'm curious, you kind of talked about the program that's going on now and in the near future. What's, do you have a sense of what's gonna be happening in the fall?
Yeah.
You can say no. You can say no, you don't know.
I would love to see, you know, through this summer, we really hope to build out programming using the Ben High space and see what that can become. We'll be using it for summer camp, but also filling it with group fitness. So we should have the basement at the rec center back by then. I would love to have our Teen Leaders Program really like using that space at the rec center and kind of making it like their own, putting their fingerprint on it. Beyond that, I just know whatever space we have is going to be filled with great programming. So not, not specifically.
Okay.
That's great. Yeah, she has superpowers. So Sarah Perrin, go ahead, please.
Kayla, thanks. You answered some of my questions, but you, I, you just answered. I was gonna ask if you provide services for seniors. You answered that already. So just in addition to that, I'll just ask a couple more. Do you remember when you started services for seniors and did that overlap with any of the Senior Center services? And also, what type of program offerings do you currently have for seniors? You did mention some, so thank you. And what potential do you see with the space at Ben High for senior programs?
So, let's see. How I've looked at the programming is we want to make sure that there are programs that are appealing to everyone. So especially with seniors, I had a lot of seniors requesting the water exercise to come back. So that was really a priority to do as soon as I could in the pool. That was the first class we brought back into the pool, which was in the fall. We also did yoga, which the seniors really enjoyed. As far as the Silver Sneakers, that we have not brought back, but I do want to because I know nothing is taking place at the Senior Center. And, you know, they're looking for that. Space has been a big issue. And, you know, to lead into, if we get the classes going at Ben High, the rooms are so much larger and we can hold classes in there for seniors to be in there safely, have space in between them. Jane DeSanto came and who's one of the instructors, came and was really excited about the potential space in there and I think I answered. Just, yeah, continuing to do like the low-impact. And I, you know, with the Ben High space, it will let us do the classes that the seniors were, you know, always looked forward to. But with our instructors, where we are going to, we being the Y, we're going to be in Ben High. So that's where the classes will be offered.
Sarah, do you feel like you got your questions answered? Yeah?
Yeah, I guess just the one was, do you remember when you started services for seniors?
Um, I, yeah, we started. I mean, Taylor was doing Silver Sneakers back before COVID. We took the break. We reopened rec center operations in June. We didn't have any group fitness classes due to safety protocols from the state. But the water exercise was, I think, October. We brought that back. And again, that's not just seniors, but the senior definition is, you know, age fifty and up at the Senior Center and age fifty-five and up at the rec center. And I'd say ninety percent of our attendees fit that easily.
Great. Good question, Sarah. Jeannie, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. I just wanted to follow up. Shannon was talking about the, the grants. The, the grant for, for the rec center or Ben High, was that, is that the rental? Is that the six-month rental?
Right. Yes, that's the six-month rental.
And is that, is that for the auditorium? Is that for the two spaces for the Wednesday classes or after-school classes? What?
Yes, that's for the auditorium and the two adjacent classrooms that we'll be using both for the school age program and group fitness, seniors, adults, family, everything.
Okay. All right. And so then what's the plan? So when, so when when does that grant, has that grant already started? When does that grant run until? What's the plan after that grant?
Yeah, and Shannon can speak to a little bit more than me probably, but it is, the grant was written in to be a six-month rental with some extra money for utilities, you know, to be in the space. And the start of programming, when that runs out, we will see what we have developed. You know, I'm hoping to build it up and use it as much as possible, but while remaining, you know, we don't anticipate charging for the classes. So at this point, I do not know what will happen at the end of the six months. When the, when the rental support from the grant runs out, I that's as far as I've gotten.
And is that, is that September? When, when is that?
September, yes.
So, so what we've got is programming through the summer to be figured out?
Right, yep. So I have great space through September. And then, you know, either funding or we move things around. I am, you know, concerned at the idea of losing it after we establish a great location and a great programming space. It's a great opportunity that we've been given. So we're gonna do the best that we can with it. I think the beauty of this space is it will be open to transformation. You know, one room is carpeted, one room is beautiful, like cool tile floor. So vinyl tile, very multipurpose. So we'll do the best with it. But my vision for it is not to always be youth program. You know, we're in COVID land. So the idea was while schools were semi-remote, we need a space to bring these kids when they're not in school. So hopefully that ends soon and we can change what the space is used for.
Thank you very much.
Jeannie, those are good questions and things that the board obviously will want to keep a close eye on going into the fall. Shannon, do you have any, anything along that line? Looks like you've got some, some comments.
Sure. I was just gonna say, I mean, you know, one of the goals of Ben High, when you look at that space, what makes the most sense is to, you know, really be occupying it for as much as possible throughout all of your, all the hours of the day and the weekends. And, you know, the auditorium itself is a large space with capacity for, I mean, you know, if you're doing an event there, you could have a capacity for like two hundred. So once events are safe to do again, right, then that can be another source of income is to think about other partners that could use that. And it could be rented out for all kinds of things. We've also talked about other, other groups. We've taught, Kayla and I have both talked with Berkshire Dance Theater, for example, and others about possibly partnering. So, you know, the goal as we approach September is who can our potential partners be? What program, what programming can we have there for all ages, you know, so that the space is being utilized? And then as the gym comes online, what sort of after-school programs can also be developed? Because that's another source of revenue that can come in to the Y. And that's just gonna be a great space for that because you've got, you know, if, especially once the gym is up and going, I think that that will be really popular. But the part of the reason that we put, we asked the owner to make one of the rooms, you know, carpeted and can also serve as sort of like a lounge area or an area that you can, you know, I mean, I think particularly seniors, they're looking for more fitness classes, but they also want some areas that are just gonna be comfortable to hang out. As well as parents of young children if their, if their kids are doing classes. So so that's another thing that we're keeping in mind. And hopefully some of those things will be much more concrete as the next few months, you know, open back up.
That's great. Thank you. Jean, your hand was up and then it went down again. Are you, do you have what you need? Okay. So this is all very positive. Stuart, is there anything you want to add to this conversation? Or are we, are you happy with the direction this is going? This is kind of how you imagined it playing out?
Yes, I'm very happy with what's happening. I think that as we hopefully begin to reopen, I think it's gonna offer much more potential for folks of all ages. I haven't yet seen the space. I hear very nice things about it. I was supposed to attend. I walked through the other day, but got tied up in another meeting and wasn't able to be there. So I do intend to some point, get in there and take a look at that space and see what else we might be able to do with it.
We all know you just want to go shoot a few hoops in there, so we'll.
Well, yeah, when the court's ready, let me know.
All right. Well, Kayla, any, any last words?
Yes, I did have one, you know, just feel good. We're getting lots of calls about summer camps. So for anyone who's, you know, listening in, we plan on having a great summer camp. Again, it went great last year. I can only imagine it being better this year. Registration will open early April. And then the beloved egg hunt, that's such a, you know, a Bennington tradition. We didn't feel safe having, you know, a big group gathering yet. So what we decided to do was an egg hunt swim. And that will be on April third. It will be very controlled, just like you reserve a lane. We've done it for Valentine's Day. The message in a bottle. So anyway, the egg hunt is happening. It's just a little bit different this year. It will be in the pool. And if they want information, to just contact us at the rec for that.
Thank you very much for that update. That's great. Really inspiring. It looks, looks like you're gonna have a great summer programming. So thank you, behalf of the board for all you're doing. All right, we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is community policing update. And I would look to our vice chair, Jeannie, to frame this for us, maybe.
Yeah, so we have, we have three areas of update. We have policy updates, which Bruce is gonna do. We have procedures updates, which Jean is gonna do. And we have vehicle updates, which I'll do. You're on.
You get the fun stuff. So we are, let's see, four out of six policies for the spring have been drafted. A couple of them are still at the attorney's. The town attorney in particular, but the state's attorney. Pretty soon, the body worn cameras and collaborative partnerships policies will be heading in that same direction. This coming Wednesday, we will be gathering again via Zoom at one o'clock to draft the nepotism and fraternization policy. And then in two weeks, we will be working on the code of conduct policy. So things are moving fast. It seemed like a long way away back in December, and yet here we are, almost at the beginning of April.
Are you finding enough people to be on your work teams?
Yes, we've, we've filled every single one with four different people. It's really, they've all worked really hard. You know, not all of these are equally, none of them are easy. But it's, yes, the community has really come forth and, and we should be thankful that we live in this kind of community where we have people who are willing to engage in what could sometimes be thought of as drudgery. But I find it exciting.
I like the idea that you're spreading the load around.
Oh, absolutely.
And I recognize that there's some regulars there like yourself, but it's great that you're
Yeah.
having on so many different members of the community.
Yes, it's, the, the four members of the community are different each time. And so when we just did six, that's six times four. So gives everybody a sense of who's there.
Nice work.
Okay, I'll go next. So while I don't like to read things, I am going to read what I wrote because there's a lot of details and dates that if I don't read it, I'll probably mess it up. So what I'm reporting on tonight is the procedure review process for the public to participate. So the procedures are not being written by committee. They're being written and updated by the police department, but there is gonna be a way for the public to make comments. So this is, this is, if, if anyone out there is wanting to do that, pay close attention. So the, the procedures that, that will be worked on are for the policies that have been adopted at this point. So there's many that haven't been adopted yet. This only applies to those that have been adopted. They will be posted along with, the procedures will be posted along with the policies they relate to on the town website. We, as the select board, will announce that they're posted at a regular select board meeting. The comment, the public comment period for those procedures will begin the following Monday. The comment period is ten days long and information on how to make comments will be and information on how to make comments will be placed on the town website and the Bennington Police Department website. The town Facebook page, the Bennington Police Department Facebook page, front porch, front porch forum and in the banner. Comments can be submitted electronically from the town website and an electronic acknowledgement will be sent to the participant. Once the comment period is over, any changes and are made by the, by the police department and they're signed by the chief and the select board chair, the procedures will be posted on the police department website along with the related policy. My God, I'm tired just reading it. The select board working group will be announcing the procedures for the first eight policies, like I said, that have been adopted. They'll be ready for public comment starting on April nineteenth. So we will be announcing it on April twelfth. The comment period will begin on April nineteenth at eight AM and it will close April twenty-eighth at five PM. Okay, hang with me. The eight policies that are going to be posted on April twelfth are duty to intervene, fair and impartial policing, investigation and reporting of hate crimes, use of conducted electronic weapons, response to resistance, use of force, domestic violence investigations, traffic enforcement and responding to a person experiencing a mental health crisis. The four people within the, the BPD that will be working on the procedures are Michelle Farrar, Joshua Stemp, Cam Grande and Paul Doucet. And I just want to make a few clarifications, um, about, about what I just said. The, I don't want people to think that if they make, if the, I don't want people, the public to, to think that just because you make a comment or a suggestion, it will be in the procedure. That doesn't, it doesn't mean that it will. It will mean that they'll consider it. We've all made comments. They don't always get incorporated. So I just wanted people to, to realize if you don't see your comment in a specific procedure, don't assume that they didn't read it. They did. Um, oh, and the other piece is the select board is not going to be formally adopting the procedures like we did the policies. Um, the chair signs it and, and they'll be, that, that will be the finished product. So I just want, there's a little, the process for us is a little bit different, so I just wanted to make that clear. And that's it.
Jean, it's pretty, even for me, it's pretty hard to follow. I was a little flow chart or a little, uh, calendar, a little something, a little something to
Yeah.
How it works might help people out. I don't know, but, uh, it feels to me like there might be a way to make it more clear than to read that statement.
Yeah, and there's, and there's A statement up. We will put a statement up. Yeah, and, and, and it, some of it is where to, which website you need to go to to do the function that you're looking to do. But yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to make it clear because it is, it is quite, um, confusing.
Stuart, it looks like you've got, uh, some thoughts on this.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I think it's important to note that, um, the eight policies, uh, with their, uh, associated procedures, uh, should be ready next week. Uh, I can tell you the leadership of the Bennington Police Department and their staff have been working pretty hard, uh, to get these things done and, and following up on what Jean said about if your comment's not, uh, doesn't show up in the procedure, it's not because it's not, uh, been considered. These procedures are basically police procedures developed historically over time. And, uh, they follow, uh, essentially, uh, pretty stringent rules about how police may react to a given situation. So I think it's, it's important to note that it's why we're, we're not developing the procedures because we're not the ones that have access to those kinds of, uh, actions that are required in order to perform uh, normal police response to some of these policies we've been developing. And that's all I really need to add at this point.
Okay. Let's see, you have one more, Jeanie, but I, uh, someone just popped into the meeting. Let's see, doesn't have her hand up, so I, we'll, we'll see what, what comes of this. Uh, why, why don't you go ahead, Jeanie? There may be questions on the, on the policy, on the procedure rollout yet, but you, uh, you're talking about vehicles?
I am talking about vehicles, but, uh, you know, and there will be a statement, so I think, I think it will be clear. It's just, it's harder to understand it when you're, when we're saying it, um, verbally. But, um, yes, I'm talking about vehicles. So I understand that the police department is going to go out for bid on a hybrid, their first hybrid vehicle on April first, which is really exciting. And in addition, if we don't already have them, we are soon going to have, um, electric bicycles and the police department in town. So we are definitely moving in the electric, uh, you know, into the electric era. So it's very exciting and I'm really appreciative.
That's great. I'm gonna pause just for a minute. Uh, I, I do have a phone, a person who's called in. And just remind anyone that if you've called in by telephone and you want to raise your hand, you have to press star nine to be recognized. And, uh, that, that essentially raises your hand in the meeting. If you, um, are called on, then you have to press star six to unmute yourself. And, um, as such, I have a, I have an individual who would like to, um, speak, so I'm going to, uh, unmute. I think I've unmuted. Let's see, have I unmuted you, Lynn?
Yep, I'm unmuted, I believe.
Okay, great. Welcome, welcome into the meeting. Sorry, I'm still getting used to the webinar functions, uh. But please go ahead and introduce yourself, Lynn, and, um, tell us what's on your mind.
So yeah, I'm Lynn Maza, Bennington resident. I just had a quick question about the procedure review process and I wasn't sure. Because it is, I wasn't sure if you said it and I just missed it or, um, so folks will submit through the website and they'll receive a kind of a receipt, email back, you know, or an acknowledgement that they went out. But will they receive some kind of, um, explanation about their comments? Or it, how will they know if their comments were looked at? And I, I heard you say earlier, you know, if somebody's comments can't be incorporated for whatever reason, they would probably be interested in what that reason would be. So I'm wondering if that's part of the process.
Lynn, I'd say it's very similar to what we followed with the policies and, um, Bruce and Jean may want to chime in here. When, um, when people submitted, many people chose not to speak in the public meetings about their policy suggestions, but submitted them to, um, either just Bruce or to Jean, Bruce and me. And, um, and those suggestions were, um, were reviewed for incorporation. But in some cases, they weren't appropriate and they weren't included. And, um, what I know is that we did not respond to everyone that submitted, uh, you know, a suggestion to say, you know, here's where it's been either incorporated or we didn't incorporate it. So, you know, so it's a, it's a very similar, it's a very similar process. You submit what you want. You know, you submit your comments, your comments are considered. They'll either end up in the procedures or not. I don't know, Bruce, if you wanna, if you want to add anything to that.
Lynn, the, the only thing I would just reiterate, and you've heard it probably now from two or three of us, is that you don't have to worry about whether or not your, anybody's particular suggestion was considered because they will all be considered. Um, the, the only thing, I mean, it would be untenable to ask, uh, or to require that, that an explanation be given for every single, uh, suggestion. That's just not doable. Um, so, uh, but this, this is how, uh, basically administrative agencies work throughout government. Um, we're gonna deal with one in a little bit here. So this is how, um, this is how
I, I, I get that. I'm, I'm just struggling with, you know, there's kind of the history of the, the institution of the select board and that's what I'm referring to now when I say that there's been a problem with transparency for decades. And, and we also know, you know, the IACP documented the distrust between the citizens and the police department. So it's really difficult for me to, to have trust, basically. That, not so much with, with the current members of the select board right now, but as the institution and then also with Chief Doucet as an individual and the institution of the police department. I feel like frankly that, you know, if I submit comments, they're gonna just go into a black hole. There's no reassurance to me that they actually are looked at. And I, and I hear you saying that, don't worry, they will be looked at, but you guys being the select board, I mean, aren't the people who are gonna be looking at the comments. It's, it's Doucet, Chief Doucet and his team who need to be looking at the comments. And I have no, I have no confidence that those comments will be looked at and considered. And I really think that if we're trying to move towards a community policing model, there needs to be more of that back and forth flow built into what we're doing here.
I, let me just say in response and anybody else can, I, this will be relatively short. Um, I, I hear ya. I hear the, the, the lack of trust. I believe that I will be watching and looking at, uh, the procedures. I know I will be examining them and commenting. Uh, the other piece of it is that this isn't the only game in, in the town about working with the police. There's, there are other steps being taken and other steps that will be taken. So, um, it's not just about policies and procedures. It's, there's a lot more about it than that. Uh, and Lynn, I know you know that, but it, it's really important, um, that we give this um, every effort to, to, for the community to be together on this. I get it that, that there will be people who, who still don't trust. I, I can't, I can't do anything about what happened in the past, but I can do something about what's gonna be going on in the future. That's where I am.
I mean, you just said every effort should be put forth, but I just heard that asking, you're asking for a response is untenable. So.
Let's think about wrapping this up a little bit, Lynn, but I think what he was getting at is that it, it would be, it would be far more work than, uh, than is justified for them to answer every single comment. Now, I, it seems to me that there's still room for conversation between board members and, and individuals if explanations are needed. Or it seems like there's, uh, opportunities always for, uh, people to come back to the select board and say, well, look, I commented this, it didn't go in there. I still feel strongly about this. But it, uh, you know, it does feel that we, we, at this point, we have to, um, ask the board and the incoming board, um, to keep an eye on the, on the process. And as Bruce and, and Jean and Jeanie have said they will, uh, and to, uh, trust that good work is going to be done. And, uh, to be sure that it does. So I, I, I understand that you have a lack of trust, uh, Lynn. I, I trust completely that our police department will take everything very seriously and will, uh, make every effort to accommodate all reasonable suggestions.
That's easy for you to say as a middle-class white guy.
Okay, fair, fair point. Yep, fair point. So Bruce, I saw you try to say something, uh, with your, no, okay.
I, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say, make sure that Lynn heard, um, that there's four people that are gonna be looking at the procedures and I think that that's meaningful. It's not just Paul. It's not one person. There's four people that are on, I don't know if you want to call it a committee, but, um, so I, I, I just think that's something to take into consideration.
Okay. Well, Lynn, I think we're gonna wrap this up at this point. Um, is that, uh, I, I'm not sure we're gonna get to a resolution that you're gonna feel happy about tonight, but we're gonna have to let this play out. And, um, as it, as it, as it goes along, you will have obviously opportunity for input all along the way.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Great, thank you. So Jeanie, Jean, Bruce, uh, you know, good comments from Lynn. It's complicated. Clearly for people, there's a small number of people that probably really want to be involved in the procedures piece. We do need to make sure it's clear how, how people can, you know, participate. I, I think it, it's, uh, you know, we know from, we know that not everybody shares the trust in, in the police department that some of us have. Um, and for good reason, uh, for some people. And, um, but I also feel like there's a lot of reason to believe that our police department will do a really good job with this. So I think that, I think we can leave it there unless you have any last thoughts on this. Jean, I see your hand up.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that since this process started and I guess especially since Bruce and Jeanie and I have been working so closely with the police department, they have been nothing but forthcoming and nothing but cooperative with us. We have, we have had no reason to doubt their sincerity and their commitment to this process. I ju, I just felt like I needed to say that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for saying that. Okay, are we ready to move on to the next item? I see nods. All right. Thank you very much for that update. Thank you for all the work you're doing on this. Um, sounds like you're gonna have a busy summer. That's good. Uh, the next item on our agenda tonight is the lead line bond documents. This is fairly perfunctory, uh, and we, as Stuart laid out in his memo. Well, Stuart, why don't you go ahead and, uh, give us your, uh, brief overview if you would, please?
Be glad to. Uh, this is very similar to the process we went through with the ladder truck bond. Uh, these, these monies, although they're coming out of a, uh, different, um, bucket, uh, they're coming out of, uh, agency of natural resources monies. Uh, we still have to follow the process that the bond bank establishes for any borrowing. And these are the monies that will be one hundred percent reimbursed. Uh, but we're looking, uh, for the board to approve the loan agreement and authorize the chair to sign it. To approve the general obligation bond and authorize the chair to sign it. To waive the reading of and adopt the resolution, authorizing the chair to sign it. And then finally, to approve the certificate and authorize the chair to sign it. So you, you could probably do that all in one motion, uh, if, if you've got enough, uh, air in your lungs. Um, but it's, uh, it's relatively straightforward. This just puts that million plus dollars, um, on the table and we, we get to go to work.
Before we, before we have a, oh, you already have a motion. All right. Before we have a motion, let me just ask you, Stuart. Uh, I should have asked you this before the meeting, but it was a busy day. Exhibit C, that Town of Bennington General Obligation Bond Certificate of Registration, looks like it needs to be signed by the treasurer, not by the
That's correct. That's, that, that, we, we, we included it because it's one of the documents, but that is only signed by the treasurer, not by the chair.
Okay.
And so that does not need to be adopted by you folks.
You're looking for three signatures. Uh, my signature will suffice. Do you need the wet signatures? Do you need these actual documents back or can you take?
Uh, no, scan, scan and sign is, is fine. And I think it's four signatures, Donald. I think there are four documents you need to sign.
I only, I only count three.
The resolution and the tax certificate. I think there
Yep.
I think there are four, Donald.
There's four listed.
I have, I have four, but one of them, exhibit C, says it should be signed by the treasurer. So I, I am possibly missing a document here.
Oh, no, well, hold on. Uh, the loan agreement does require your signature. No, I think you're now right, Donald. I think you're right.
Well, it happens once in a big while, but.
Yeah, just, just at, at the end of your tenure, um.
My last brain cell. You just used it.
Yeah, there are only three. You are correct, I believe.
So which one is, which one are we eliminating?
Uh, there's, I, I think there are two that are combined. The resolution and certificate, I believe, are combined.
I think we're safe if we actually say all four.
I think the resolution and certificate are combined. I just, because one was called the certificate of registration, I was cautious about that. Okay, so I, I think, I think the motion, if we say, uh, the motion would be for the resolution and tax certificate, I think that would be.
The loan agreement? You need that there too?
The reading of, of and adopt the resolution, authorizing the chair to sign it and the tax The reading of, of and adopt the resolution, authorizing the chair to sign it and the tax certificate.
But you will, you will need to approve the loan agreement and the general obligation bond.
Yeah, they all have to be in there. So can I make a motion so that we? Thank you. That would be helpful. I would move that we approve the loan agreement, approve the general obligation bond and authorize the chair to sign both, waive the reading and adopt the resolution, authorizing the chair to sign it and approve the tax certificate, authorizing the chair to sign anything which, that is necessary for the chair to sign.
That's the best end to a resolution I've ever heard. Okay, so I'm, I'm seeing three signatures and I'm seeing the treasurer signing that one. So that's, that's good. Thank you Bruce for that. It looks like Sarah has her hand up. Are you seconding Sarah?
I, actually I have a question. For clarification, public clarification, I just wanted to ask that this money is coming to us. It's not taxpayer money and we're repaying it. It's not taxpayer money for the loan. Is that correct?
That's correct. This, this money, we are borrowing this money, but it's 100% reimbursable.
Okay, so 100% reimbursable. Taxpayers are not paying a penny, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I will second that motion. Thank you for the clarification for public.
Here are the zeros. Can everybody see the zeros? These are my favorite numbers right here. Zero, zero, zero. That's how much we have to pay back.
And I'd like to second that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to sign these documents, for me to sign these documents on behalf of the board, to bond for these funds, which are 100% reimbursable. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, I would ask you to all please unmute yourselves. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much for that. That's, it's really great to get the last of the lead service lines taken care of. So Stuart, I will, I will send these signatures. I'll sign this and send them by email.
That sounds great.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the manager's report. Stuart, go ahead, please.
All right, just to start out with an announcement, we've had a couple of calls already this year, but our Household Hazardous Waste Collection event will take place on Saturday, May 8th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, once again at the Mount Anthony Union Middle School. That was a site that worked very well for us last year. The traffic didn't back up too far down the roadway and people did start lining up close to 8 o'clock. So we should be there. There'll be plenty of volunteers on hand. Please, we'll still be asking you to wear a mask. And if you don't have one, we may, we'll have some available for you. So that's the first announcement. In the second instance, I included the police stop data for 2020 in my manager's report. This was all put together by the people at the Bennington Police Department. It is not yet uploaded onto the state system because they do that a little bit later in the year, but we did wanna make it available to you and to the public. And it is, this time it is clearly accurate data. We have corrected the errors in, in the way the data was being collected and codified. And we think this is a really, a much more accurate picture of, of traffic stops in Bennington for the last year. A second instance that I would like to announce is that the National Guard has received the federal funds necessary to begin the construction, design, construction and permitting process of the readiness center on our property on Bowen Road. That is really good news. We're still looking at a 2023 date before it's constructed. But we'll probably be moving to take possession of the armory through that memorandum of understanding that we developed some time ago. And then the guard will, will, in a sense, lease back at no cost, of course, the, the armory here until they're ready to move. But I think that's a wonderful step in a, a long time coming. Not quite as long as the rail trail, but nonetheless, it's finally coming together. And we'll start to see some activity along those, along those lines. And then the last thing, we, probably many of you have received comments from at least one resident concerned about the reclassification of the groundwater out in the areas where the PFOA contamination was identified. That public comment period has been extended till April 2nd. So there's more opportunity for people who are impacted by this to comment. These, these restrictions do not prohibit drilling of a well, but they are new, there are new standards being developed that will make drilling of wells safer, perhaps more costly. And the, I think there's a restriction that if you are within 200 feet of the municipal water system, and it can support your connection, that you should connect to that system. And I know there are concerns because not everybody that is within 200 feet of the municipal system was connected at this time. And that was a negotiation between St. Cobain and the state of Vermont. The town was not involved in that. So we'll, we'll see what comes of this reclassification when it's in place. And perhaps future boards will be looking at ways to help people get connected, if in fact the town's system can support it. Because once you get to the very far end of the system, lack of flow tends to, tends to make it more difficult for us to get the changeover that we need to maintain the chlorination in the system and therefore provide safe water. So those kinds of things will be engineered and engineering think will be used to make those determinations in the future. But I just wanted to let people know that comment period has been extended.
Thank you Stuart. Just for the board's information, I did hear from Chad Gordon, our, our former board member, who also has, shared some of these concerns in a similar situation where tests have been negative and yet there's a reclassification. So very ticklish situation. Stuart's monitoring it closely. The all-town staff is. Of course, we don't want to hide the ball on potential water contamination, nor do we want to cause undue hardship on, on landowners. So it, it's a fine, fine needle to thread. But Stuart, thank you for continuing to monitor that closely. I have two hands up with questions on your report, Stuart. If you don't mind, I'm gonna start with Bruce, please.
Stuart, I have two questions. One on the traffic stop information. And if it's, and it's better if I just go to the chief, just let me know. If, and it has to do with the number of searches. Are each of the searches that were conducted last year identified on this? Cause there only seems to be like 15. And I'm, I'm assuming that there were more than that, but.
That, that's a great question, Bruce. I, I, I don't believe, I believe that the ticket now requires that information provided. So if.
Yeah.
Any, all these searches were, were made, I don't think there, that were not documented.
I'm, yeah, the, the dilemma is, is that we've talked about, I mean, what we've itemized is really the non-Caucasian stops. And therefore I'm assuming there were a number of other stops, or there were a number of other searches of Caucasian driver vehicle.
I see, I see what you're driving at.
Yeah, so.
I, I have to.
That's really critical. Yep, I think that's the place. My second question really does have to do with Al Bishefkin's letter, Nancy Perlman's letter, and communication recently today from Chad Gordon. And my, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for your, you, you did answer some of my question, which was, to what degree has the town engaged in negotiations with St. Cobain and the Agency of Natural Resources? And from my understanding of what you said, the answer was, we didn't.
We were not allowed to.
We weren't allowed to. That's right. Cause in that sense. However, we are allowed, it seems to me, to respond in a letter in support of those residents who have been, for whatever reason, left out of the solution, other than to have a point of entry treatment system. My concern is twofold. One, it's for the, for the resident. There, I think Al makes a very good point that Chad would second, because I understand it from him, that it's gonna be difficult to, or more difficult, let's put it that way, to sell this property if the groundwater, granted it's not their water, but the groundwater is identified as non-potable by the A and R. If I was a banker, I might be interested in that designation. If I was a banker being asked to lend money. That's the point. Secondarily, I am concerned about the long-term property value of those, I don't know how many properties at this point, cause I'm, if there's some way that somebody knows how many properties there are in this same conundrum, that would be helpful. But it would seem to me that the town could write to the A and R, basically stating that we are in support of the concerns raised by these, our fellow town residents. And if there's a reason why we shouldn't do that, I haven't been able to come up with one on my own, so please clue me in.
I mean, if this board wants to take a position in, in general, in support of, of the arguments made by, by the, the folks we've heard from, you, you're certainly free to do that. And that becomes a part of the record.
Right. So, but there hasn't been any reason why the town administration has not taken that.
No, not at this point. I, I mean, I understand that the reclassification is required because the water is contaminated. They're not, that you can't drill a well. They, they have tested and those people have the Poet systems in their, in their basements. They continue to use them. St. Cobain is required to maintain them forever. So St. Cobain is, is on the hook, which in the future, of course, it may decide that it's much easier to connect them to the municipal system if they're close enough and the system can take it. But I, I would, I would look to the board, if, if you would like, like or direct me to draft a letter of support for these folks, I'd be glad to do that and sign it on your behalf.
It feels to me as though this should be an agenda item. There may be people who feel strongly about.
If it's a, Mr. Chair? If it's an agenda item, it's gonna be too late for the April 2. That's the problem. The problem is that, that we don't meet again. And this was on our agenda, at least through the, through the manager's report. And while I agree generally that this would be preferable in my mind to be a specific item on the agenda, time is of the essence here. And so delay is not really one of those options.
But do you feel like you have all the facts, Bruce, on, on the water contamination and, and what the actual implications of it are? Do you, do you feel like we actually know what is being protected? I understand that the damage that's happening to residents and I, I do.
And to potentially to the town's tax base.
If I can finish.
Well, we, go ahead.
If, you know, it feels to me that we have, if we're going to take a position like this, we have an obligation to understand both what the damage to the town is in the tax base. Yes, we understand that piece, but also what the environmental hazards are for future generations.
Well, I'll, I'll say one thing and then I'll, then I'll listen to others. Cause I'm, I'm not sure that, I would not be taking a, a position, I would not want the town to be taking a position that the water contamination, the groundwater contamination should not be classified. That's not the, that, it seems to me is not the point. It seems to me that, that the folks who have been left in the lurch here have been left on a lurch essentially because the A and R basically made a deal with St. Cobain without worrying too much about these folks at the tail end. They do have, they do have clean potable water in their well. We know that. And they have a, a Poet system, a point of entry system. But that's not gonna necessarily be long-term. I, I think, you know, basically supporting the letter that we got from Al Bishefkin and Nancy Perlman, doesn't, they're not taking the position that it shouldn't be changed. They're just taking the position that something needs to be done for them.
I see. I, that is a good nuance and I, I hear you and I understand you. I think I would be unwilling to vote, without understanding the science, I would be unwilling to vote on, against or in favor of changing the reclassification or any kind of effort to change the reclassification. I think the science piece has to be done by somebody else. If, if what you're suggesting is that we ask town staff to write a letter in support of asking the Agency of Natural Resources to redouble their efforts to try to find some way of making, making, bringing St. Cobain or other resources to these people, then that, that seems fine.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, I have two other hands up here. This is, again, this is, you know, not really a warned item, so I feel a little bit, feel a little uncomfortable with going too far with this, but I am going to allow a little more conversation. Jean, go ahead, please.
Sarah was actually ahead of me.
Sarah's hand is down.
Oh, okay.
I actually, I, if you want, you were talking about looking into the science of this and my comment, but you kind of went into it a little bit more to, just to write a letter and support. My comment was just take, take maybe a week, look into this and do a special meeting. That was my thought. Obviously this is happening in real time, so that was my thought.
And all I wanted to say was, you know, I, I don't think any of the people that are affected by this reclassification had any clue that this was coming. You know, who knows what they would have said at public hearings that had been happening, you know, over the past, what, three years now? Had they known that this was coming, that this was coming. So I do feel badly for them, for many reasons, but that's one of them. I feel like they've sort of been blindsided.
Stuart, your suggestions on threading this needle?
Obviously, I, I've been, you know, I've been in touch with John Smelter from the agency for quite a long time. I, I mean, we have talked about the, the concerns that have been raised. I can certainly raise those, those issues again. I will say that we have not seen a damage to the tax base from the PFOA situation. There was, there was a, that was one of the first things that people raised a concern about, but we have not seen the retails, the resale value of homes diminish, at least by, at this time, due to the PFOA situation. But I, certainly, we can make an argument, perhaps through our legislature, that the state allocate more funds should people want to connect to the system. There again, it's, it's, the, the people who were not connected, were not connected because the PFOA limits in their well were not sufficient to meet that state mandated, what would be the minimum safe level for drinking water. That's why they were not connected. And I, I can tell you that everybody that was in that situation had to have at least one visit from either Richard Spees or John Smelter or Chuck Schwur. Those folks were down here all the time, practically living in Bennington while this was ongoing. Yes, St. Cobain negotiated a deal that they felt that they could support. The state took it, I think, as far as they could. And, you know, I, I, I feel badly that there. And, you know, I feel badly that there are people out there that don't feel that they've been treated fairly or whatever the argument is. I know that there are people that are close to the municipal system that would have been preferred to connect to it, but the monies that were negotiated by the state did not go far enough to do that because they did not meet that limit. And in neighborhoods where a line was running along the entire street, and there were homes that were not contaminated, they were connected. But in cases where homes are just beyond the end of the line, those folks were not connected, and the lines were not extended. And so... But certainly, the state is aware of the implications. They have heard from Al Bishefkin, and as I said, they've extended the comment period. And I will certainly add my voice to the voice of those concerned that they're... If they would prefer to be on the municipal system, is there any way for them to get help to get there? I'd be glad to do that.
Okay. I don't usually accept public comment at this time, but I am going to let Al Bishefkin speak. Al, before I unmute you, I'm going to put you on a short leash here and ask you to be a minute or less, please. If anything that we have not covered in this conversation, go ahead and feel free to mention. But other than that, I really want to move on. And so, go ahead, Al. If you want to speak, you have to unmute yourself, and we're all ears.
All right. This is very different. Thank you for talking about this and bringing it up at the meeting. One possible solution is to write A and R in saying that you, as the board, is very interested in this issue and unfortunately cannot have an answer by April 2, or is it April 9? I'm not sure when that deadline is. And asking, requesting that they extend that a little further, so you can have a fuller conversation about what this is all about.
It's a good suggestion. That's a good suggestion, Al. As always, you bring good thinking and a calm approach. Stuart, could we ask A and R for an extension to that, so that we can have a public meeting on this and decide a position?
I can make that call tomorrow.
Okay. Al, would that feel okay to you if we went ahead and tried to do that?
Yeah, I think that would be great.
We'll try to get that comment period extended. Be sure to get your comments in. Chad and Nancy, get their comments in. But also, that will give this board time to do a public hearing on it if this board wants to take a more, you know, strident stance one way or the other on this.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, great. Thanks for your patience, and thanks for joining us tonight.
Okay.
So we are... We were poised to take action on this. I think we have some next steps, some next steps in the works here. Are board members happy with that? Try to get the comment period extended. Have the manager communicate directly with A and R. Okay. All right. Thank you, Stuart, for your thoughts on... We're being open. Let us kick that around a little bit. All right. So is that it for your manager's report?
That's it.
That's it?
That's all, folks.
So we did not... We do have upcoming agenda, I guess. One thing, are you doing a... Are you doing a meeting on the 1st? Are you doing an organizational meeting on the 1st?
I don't know. I don't know, Donald. I think that's a call that, well, you're going to have to be involved in because you're still the chair until that time.
So I think this... We'll have to see what happens on that. We may do a reorganization meeting on the 1st of the month, and we... If we did that, that would just probably be reorganization. So other business for our next regularly scheduled meeting. Who wants to... Who's got something that they want to put forward on that? Go ahead, Jean. I'm sorry, not other business. Upcoming agenda items for our next regularly scheduled meeting. Sorry.
Yeah. So I think if possible, there's some really amazing work that's being done between the Better Bennington Corporation and the Bennington Banner on marketing, both in terms of that really lovely up-country magazine that comes out periodically, and also just some work that is being done with downtown merchants. And, you know, I would be really interested in having them come on that, whatever our next regular meeting is, and just give like a 15-minute update on what they're doing.
You have the contact information on that, Stuart. Jeanne, do you want to connect with Stuart on that?
Yeah. I will do that.
And Bruce, will you have anything at that next meeting that will need to be on the agenda?
Likely, yes. Two. For first reading. Two policies for first reading.
And if we're lucky with the Agency of Natural Resources, there may be a conversation about the water designation? Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. We should move into other business at this point, and I don't want to be a downer, but I do want to thank Jean for sending me some of the words that Governor Northam spoke about the Atlanta spa shooting, which is horrible. I know we all were very affected by that. I thought of my quote, just his first paragraph, when he said, "We're grieving with the Asian-American community and all of the victims of the horrific shooting in Atlanta last night that took eight lives, six of whom were women of Asian descent. This is the latest in a series of heinous attacks against Asian-Americans across the nation, but sadly, these are not isolated events. Since the start of the pandemic, we've seen a disturbing rise in inflammatory and xenophobic rhetoric, harassment, and violence against Asian-American communities." He goes on to talk about what we all have to do as individuals in terms of getting rid of hatred and bigotry and racism in our community. And it is easy in this lovely little town of Bennington to think that that all happened somewhere else. But I do want to just remind us that it was only last October that Haiyan Yu, a woman from Brattleboro, was here at the monument and was subject to some horrible racist language and treatment that was mortifying, I think, for most of our community. And she was very forgiving about it, and she was very understanding. But she did say very clearly that she felt that her Asian friends and her Asian community were under threat and were feeling particularly under attack by racism and by the forces of white supremacists and white supremacism in America. And so, we're not immune. We have to keep trying to do better, and we have to really redouble our efforts and certainly keep our hearts with those in Atlanta and... But really, all the Asian community, we need to be strong for them, too. That's on my mind. I think also on my mind is the fact that this is my last meeting, and the fact that you all have been really just a phenomenal group of people to work with. This past year was extremely difficult on so many fronts. I need to say that our town staff, every single person on our town staff, worked so hard to make... Get us to where we are now in COVID, worked extra shifts, covered each other. When we had COVID in our police department, the other officers stepped up and made it possible to keep the community safe and functioning. Our town offices have kept things going. We've run safe elections. The town staff has really been amazing this past year. But you know what? The select board also has been really good, and I appreciate the fact so much that when my job got very complicated and really got to be almost more than I could handle as a result of COVID, that each and every one of you stepped up and offered to do a lot more than most select board members traditionally have ever had to do, and you continue to do that. So, you know, Bruce, Jeanne, Jeanne, Jim, Sarah, you folks are just amazing. And I'm sorry that Bill Scully wasn't here to join us. He would have brought a lot of... I had a lot of fun sparring with him, but also really enjoyed his focus on numbers and business and details. We miss him a lot. But even in his absence, the rest of you have done a fantastic job. So it's been... We won't say it's been a great pleasure, but it's been a great honor serving with all of you. And I'm really, really glad to have had the opportunity to be in service to this wonderful community. So that's what I have on my mind tonight. Does anybody else have anything they want to say in other business? Go ahead, Jean.
Well, Donald, thank you very much for your kind words. I'm hoping that you have a present or two in your office.
Funny you should say this, because I don't think this is really select board protocol, but it is true.
Yes, it is.
May drop by these two things.
Can someone let Chief Dusseth in?
Oh, yeah. Let Chief Dusseth in, please.
Yes.
Oh, no. Things are really going to go to heck now.
So there's an informant in town that I got in touch with, and this informant told me what a few of your favorite things are.
Oh, yeah? I'm not that much anymore.
So all of us, including you, you need to open those presents.
Open them, please.
Hours.
Yes.
No. Stuart, what are you doing? Oh, nice.
So everyone has one, and we're going to toast to you, Donald. And for the public that is still watching, I want to make it perfectly clear, this is ginger beer. It is non-alcoholic. So we thought it would be appropriate to have a little special snack in honor of our illustrious Chair, Donald.
Well, I appreciate that so much, the fact that here I'm the only heart patient in the room, and you guys are all willing to drink zero alcohol with me. So thank you for that.
And they are twist-off. I made sure of that.
That was...
Oh, it's much better than I thought it would be. Much better.
It's okay.
Oh, that's delicious.
Yeah, you get used to it after a while.
That's delicious. Open your other box, Donald.
There's more.
There's more, and it's really shocking what was going to be in this box, I have to say. That's really good.
I was stunned. I mean, really.
I know. Who knew?
It's probably a box and a box and a box, right?
You think you know someone.
Yeah. This isn't remotely good for me.
Jean, you need to tell people.
You need to say it, but that's good grief.
Have you been talking to my family?
Whizlers?
But there's like three major food groups for me: ginger beer, red licorice, and party mix.
Party mix.
Party mix.
I have to tell you, there was a little bit left. We ate it.
The party mix has been gone for a long time.
I think you have to not tell my heart doctor about this.
Okay, but you have to keep going, Jean. You have to keep going. We're on air.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So there's one more present.
Oh, no.
One more present for you, Donald. But before I read this, I have to ask forgiveness from Robert Frost. Okay, here I go. "Stopping by a select board meeting on a Monday evening. Who was the chair? I think I know. His name was Donald, that is so. He has been chair for two years last. When begged to stay, he said, 'I'll go.' His minions are we, but had no fear, as Donald always would lend an ear. He did work harder than most we know, and we take comfort he will still be near. Meetings that lasted and lasted, he could make. All the time we needed, he would take. Calm and cool is how he rolled. Patience and compassion that you cannot fake. Our dear Donald, we will miss you most deep. Your passion for our town is so complete. The lessons you've shared, we will always keep. The lessons you've shared, we will always keep." Here's to you, Donald.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you, friends. I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that, and I wish I didn't have to be the one to tell you that we have to go into executive session.
Yeah, I know. I saw that. Oh, well. Good night, everyone.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. It's been a great honor being with you. Good night, Bennington. We'll see you around campus. All right. We are going to kick out Mike Cutler and...
Nancy Lively.
I guess I need a vote to go into executive session, please.